Hey, Jay, how's it going?
Good.
Ready to do, do the thing. Like the call that's me, the Clay County Commission to Order, we will begin this evening with our invocation is, is Mr. Nick Seibauts here? And I am pronouncing your name correctly?
Yes, sir.
And you're Reverend, or what's your title?
Yes, I'm Reverend, I'm Pastor of faith for your church, and I'm a pastor of the parish of them.
Thank you very much. I always like to have whoever does our invocation and kind of give a little bit of a-
I appreciate that.
-shout out for their congregation.
I appreciate that.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Commissioners. What do you pray with us? Glad we thank you for the opportunity to serve our community. Your promises that you provide wisdom as we come and you ask, we ask for it. So, we ask tonight that as we come before the needs of our community, that you would give us wisdom to best rule, to best lead in that area. I thank you for the Commissioners and their sacrifice to serve this community. You continue to bless them and be near to them. We thank you for this community. We pray for your continued blessing, especially this season, as we remember your sacrifice. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Withington.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Wagner.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Next item is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion along the lines of the approval of our agenda? Commissioner Johnson, you're recognized.
Sir, I move to approve tonight's agenda as written.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's agenda as written. Is there, are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, you're recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Next item on our agenda are public comments. Are there any comments from any members of the public present on any subject? Seeing none. That brings us to the consent agenda. Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless a commissioner requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. This evening, there are eight items on the consent agenda. The first item is approval of the commission meeting minutes for March 7th and March 14th. Resolution 2024-89 is approving invoice payments from March 9th to March 20th. There are 641 invoices totaling $4,023,866.11. Resolution 2024-93 is approving the acceptance of an annual settlement of county collector for the year ending February 29th, 2024. Ordinance 2024-13 is approving amendments to the 2011 land development code. Resolution 2024-94 is approving a term and supply agreement with chops, barbecue, and catering for the floating marina concessionaire. And resolution 2024-92 is approving a memorandum of understanding between Harrah's North Kansas City and the Clay County Sheriff's Office. And 2024 ordinance 12 is an ordinance repealing current chapters 33 and 34 of Title III of the Clay County Code of Ordinances and replacing it with ordinance 2024-12. And the last item is resolution 2024-97 is the appointment of members to the opioid settlement task force.
Very well, thank you very much. Are there any questions from the commission? Commissioner Withington, you're recognized.
Resolution 2024-97, do you guys need to redo that because it says Western Commissioner, Eastern Commissioner, and Presiding Commissioner? There's, it's not like all the other ones that say Presiding Commissioner on behalf of the commission. There's three Western Commissioners and three Eastern. It doesn't say which ones are supposed to sign that.
Hi, which one are you?
Uh, 97.
Yeah, it looks like it's one of our old forms.
Yeah. So, I didn't know if we can still approve that.
We will redo that before it's signed today.
I would say that's what Commissioners are. Thank you for catching up.
Okay, yeah.
So, Commissioner, you are okay with leaving on consent?
I just, I wanted to make sure we're approving it. We work on a nice, maybe a level of the old form.
Thank you.
Ward is a great thing when you can reuse a document over and over, but sometimes you don't catch all the changes, so we apologize for that.
Thank you, Commissioner. That was a good catch. Are there any other questions or comments on the consent agenda before I ask for a motion? Seeing none, Commissioner Johnson.
I move to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's consent agenda. Is there any discussion or question? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. That brings us to this evening's regular agenda. I would ask if we, with the first item is interest and penalties, is the applicant present this evening? Okay, I think what I'd like to do would be to go ahead and if it's, if it's okay with the Commissioners, hold off on that one for a little bit in case the applicant shows up a little bit later and then come back to it. That way, the citizen will have an opportunity to make their case if possible. So, if everyone is okay with that, can we just move that to the end of the agenda or the end of the regular agenda so that we can allow that citizen the maximum latitude? That being the case, we will come back to 96. That means first item on our agenda is 2024-91. Administrator?
Resolution 2024-91 is a consideration of approving the implementation of the Clay County DWI Court program and required training. And Prosecutor Zach Thompson is here to provide information to the commission.
Thank you for your time. When I first approached the commission-
Oh, please go ahead and put the button on for the microphone, I'm sorry. And by the way, before we get started, I'd like to make sure that all citizens know that when you come up to address the commission, please make sure that the microphone is on. The green light will be lit at the base of the microphone and then state your name and proceed with your comments. With that, please proceed.
Zachary Thompson, Clay County Prosecutor. Once again, thank you for having me here tonight. When I first approached the county about these funds, it was up in the air whether or not this was going to be reimbursed. Today, I received documentation from the Missouri Department of Transportation that they will be reimbursing the county for the full amount if it's approved tonight. I just wanted to talk briefly about the issues of DWI in Clay County. It's a, it's a public safety issue. In 2012, roughly 10% of traffic fatalities in Clay County involved intoxication. In 2020, that number was up to 50%, right? That is a, it's a growing number. I think it's a significant number. It's a number that requires attention, especially when it's considered in light of additional information. The rate for Missouri and the United States as a whole is roughly 30%. That means fatalities in Clay County, on average, involve 20% more cases involving intoxications than the rest of the state and the rest of the country. So, why will DWI Court help? DWI Court treats the root causes of this type of crime, right? Substance abuse and things like that. The defendant in these cases, they receive a benefit, right? They can avoid additional jail time in some cases. They also may be able to obtain licensing faster than they otherwise would have. The community also gets a huge benefit from this. Study after study shows that the recidivism rates for people who successfully complete this type of program are way lower than the types of cases where they do not or they're not offered the program. This is not to say that defendants are not held accountable for their criminal conduct. They are. They will be pleading guilty to offenses and they will have convictions on their records. And this program is not for all offenders, right? Cases involving injuries and accidents, defendants with violent criminal histories would not be eligible for this type of program. So, I would be remiss in not thanking Ms. Regina Funk. She is a treatment coordinator for the Clay County Courts. Without her efforts, we probably wouldn't not have been able to secure the reimbursement from the Missouri Department of Transportation. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the commission if there are any.
Commissioner Withington, you're seeking recognition?
Yeah, no, I think this is, I think this is great. You know, when you called me, gave me all that information, you know, I thought this was great, so I'm happy to support it and I'm glad that you got the piece of paper saying it was going to be fully reimbursed because you and I joked about having to do a car wash, so. So, it's going to save us some work, but yeah, no, if this saves just one life, it's, you know, it's paid for itself, so I'm really happy to support this.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Commissioner Johnson.
I move to approve 2024-91.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2024-91. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
I'll recuse myself.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson. Yes. Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Motion passes five to favor. Why did you do that?
Thank you. I just want to ask once again, is the citizen here, I believe Asia Buchanan, for the, for the, are you, are you the applicant?
Yes.
Great. Okay, with that, if you'll make your way forward, Administrator, we will now go to 2024-96.
Resolution 2024-96 is a consideration of a request for a waiver of fees, interest, penalties, and taxes due to a county error. Ms. Buchanan is here and would like to provide information to the commission about this request.
If you would go ahead and press the button to make your, to activate your microphone and state your name and then proceed with what you'd like to say.
My name is Asia Buchanan. I moved up here in Clay County in 2020. When I moved up here, I bought a new car. I registered my car, paid my cell taxes and everything. So, I've been getting my tags regularly, my new tags. I just recently bought a new car and traded, traded my old car in, but I wound up being in Jackson County. So, I went down to Jackson County to, um, register my new car and do all the proper paperwork for that, and they told me that they don't have an account open for me because once I got my car in 2020, it, they closed my Jackson County account and I wound up having my Clay County account open, or they just said they saw that I moved to Clay County. On my title, the lady made a clinical error and she put Clay County for my address, my old address. So, I went to Clay County to try to get my new car registered and I spent about two hours in the office for her to tell me, oh, we don't have an account open for you. And I'm like, how is that possible when I registered my car, got all the paperwork saying that my car was properly registered and I've been getting my tags? And she, she was like, I have no idea. So, she wound up having to open me an account and I've been hit with almost three years worth of penalties and interest fees and late fees. And I don't feel I should be responsible for paying the interest, penalties, and all of that because had I known that I was, I had property tax coming in, I would have paid them. I have receipts from all of my cars. I have four cars. I pay my property tax every year on time. I pay everything on time. When I asked if my dealership, if they properly, if they can pay the property tax, like some dealerships pay property tax, if that was what the case was, she told me that she doesn't know, but as of now, I'm responsible for the interest and late fees because apparently you have to register your car in three different places and I have never heard of that. I never had to register my car, then take it somewhere else and register, and then take it somewhere else and register. And I have all the paperwork showing that I paid my cell taxes. I've been paying my tags. I've been paying everything that I was supposed to pay.
Do any Commissioners have any questions or comments? Commissioner Lawson?
Yeah, okay, I was, I was just reading this and it says Clay County was never notified of residents. Can Barbara explain that to me or, or is it the assessor that needs to explain it? Oh, I'm sorry.
Don't go too far because we'll, we may have more questions of you as well, but Mr. Assessor, please.
Tracy Baldwin, Clay County Assessor. So, state statute is for taxpayers, when they move from a county, they have to notify the county they're leaving and notify the county that they're moving into for their personal property taxes. Ms. Buchanan states that she had registered a car. Registered it would be through the DMV, so this is our classic case of talking to the DMV and not registered, assessing with the county. The taxpayer, Ms. Buchanan in this case, she never notified us that she was in Clay County until, I believe it was March 8th of 2024. I did waive the assessor penalty and that was due to if she moved to Clay County and we were never notified, then I wouldn't have been able to send out an assessment form. So, I did waive the assessment penalty, but unfortunately, the penalty and interest will stand. I do have that statute, if you'd like me to read, about where they have to claim their property in, in the county that they live.
I don't know if it's necessary to read the statute at this point, but I think it might be helpful if you would at least put the citation on the record. That way, we would, you know, someone cares to look for it unless, Commissioner, you would like to hear.
Well, no, the other, the thing I, I guess I don't understand, nothing new with that, but here, here's the deal. She moves into town and-
Oh, yeah, you're on.
Yeah, I'm on. She moves into town, she has her car, she registers the car, and then how did they notify the county that, I mean, there's got to be some methodology because you move, say like somebody moves into an apartment, it's not a house, just an apartment. And, and they're living there. How do we assess them? How do we know?
Well, once again, Missouri is a self-reporting state, so if you look in-
Okay.
-it's statute 137.280, and that verifies that the taxpayer has to notify the county that they're moving to to claim their, to assess their personal property.
How would a normal, everyday citizen off the street know that that was the case? I mean, do that, does the, the person they rent from or they purchase from say, hey, now listen, you know, you're new to Missouri, so here's the way it works? Or what's normal?
No, typically, typically, when you move to a new area, you should probably do some research on how the taxes and things are done like that. I, there's, there's plenty of information out there on the state's website, our county website. Every single county in the state of Missouri is exactly the same. Jackson County does it a little different than we do, but they auto-assess, which we don't auto-assess, and they're the only county that I know of in the state that auto-assesses, which, so if you move out of their county, they're going to assess you for what your last bill was, no matter if you're gone or not. So, in this case, Ms. Buchanan came to Clay County. We did her assessment March 8th, 2024. She'll have to pay the penalties and interest in the bill. Then she also has outstanding bills at Jackson County. She'll have to take our bill to show Jackson County that she paid here so they can waive it.
Okay.
And that's one reason that no other county in the state does auto-assessments. It's just not very good service.
And by auto-assess, how do they do that?
They take the bill, like if you were there last year, they take whatever you assessed for last year and automatically roll it over to this year.
Okay.
Even if it's incorrect. So, you have to get, what I've read on their website recently at Jackson County, that they open it, I believe at 6:30 in the morning, and some people have had to wait eight hours to get this taken care of.
Hmm, okay. I lived in the same house for 40 years, so, you know, it's not, not something I would be familiar with. I just don't know how a new person coming into the-
This is one of the, I mean, every state has a different law.
Sure.
So, if you move from Missouri to Texas, you would want to research on some of their, you know, state laws that are different from Missouri, and it would be just like that from county to county.
Okay.
Commissioner Johnson?
Don't go away, Tracy. Quick question for you again, sorry. Can you tell me that, what checks and balances are in place? How does, how do we know, let's say Ms. Buchanan never registered or never self-reported for property tax purposes here in Clay County, what would happen? How would that ever catch up to her?
You have to register your vehicle with the state of Missouri, your license plates. Your license plates are new every two years, so-
So, registration time.
We, that is a very common thing in our office is we, a lot of people get penalties and interest because they don't realize they need to assess every year, but they do realize that when they go to the DMV to get their license plates renewed and they say, we need your receipts. So, then they come back to us and realize they haven't assessed for the past two years and we have to put them on.
So, that's what happened in this case then?
Yep. We only go back typically two years because that's what the DMV needs. There are instances where we can go back further if we have to, but Clay County, our policy is we just go to the two years.
Okay. All right, thank you. And then Ms. Buchanan, you're shaking your head no, that, can you shed some insight on that?
Um, no, that's not what happened in my case. I've been getting my tags for the last four years. So, that, that's why, like he said, I've, I've been in Jackson County three days for eight hours. I have stood in that line for eight hours three times. I have stood in Clay County line for three hours trying to figure out what, what went wrong on our end because I have gotten my tags. I've been getting my tags. It, it, there was no account open in Clay County for me to, for them to say, oh, you have no tags. So, I mean, your, your paperwork, like I said, once I filed this, it says I registered. It says I registered with Clay County. It said all of that. So, when I went to the DMV and was getting my tags, I got my tags in 2020, I got my tags in 2021, and then in 2022, and I got my 2022 tags for two years and they just now aspiring in May of 2024. So, I've been getting my tags. I've been going to the DMV, checking and making sure everything was straight, and they, they was like, oh, you're fine. The only thing that, the only reason why this caught up to me is because on my new title, she put Clay County on my, on my title. So, when I went down to register in Jackson County, they was like, oh, you have no, you have no tags. I mean, you have no outstanding property tax. You need a waiver. So, I was in the line for eight hours to get a waiver for them to be like, oh, we can't get it because it's Clay County. So, I went to Clay County and when I tried to get a waiver from Clay County, they was like, oh, we see you have a 2020 car on your record. I said, yes, ma'am. She was like, we haven't assessed you for your property tax. And so, she brung someone else up and it was like, something's wrong. How have you been getting your tags? It was like, I've been paying, getting my tags, go to the DMV, show them my assurance, and I've been paying to get my tags. She was like, something's wrong. And I waited three hours for them to come up and she was like, oh, we have to open you up that account and now you have to pay these ta, you pay, have to pay these interest fees. She's the one that told me to come up here and talk to the assessor to get the penalties removed because she was like, something went wrong with that because, again, I've been getting my tags and in Jackson County, like he said, in Jackson County, you can't get your tags until they look and see if you got property tax. That's the same way up here. I can't get my tags until I pay my property tax.
So, have you, so did you pay property taxes on this vehicle in Jackson County?
No, I, when I went to get my tags and all that, they didn't, they said I had no property tax. So, we was under the impression because some, when you, uh, when you got, uh, how am I trying to say? I'm sorry. When you have a car with a car dealership, sometimes a car dealership would pay for your property tax. So, we was under the impression that, hey, I don't have any property tax. They see my cars on my record, so they just thought that the car dealership was handling, handling that property tax when I had my car. But I guess once we started looking it up, she said that only happens if you're leasing the car. So, that's, that's why it took three hours for us to wind up having a, she was just like, I'm just going to open you up that account. Again, I didn't know that once I registered, I had to come up here and tell you guys, hey, I registered my car. I have never had to do that.
So, when did you buy the car? What year?
2020.
And what county did you live in then?
Clay County.
So, you lived in Clay County the whole time since you bought the car?
Yes, oh, yes, sir. Clay County. That's where I registered my car in. That's where, I bought the car in Clay County. I registered my car in Clay County. I got my tags and registered in Clay County. Oh, here it says Clay County and then right here it says local tax, Kansas City, Clay County, and registration fee 48.50.
But you've never paid property taxes on that vehicle in Clay County? Is that correct?
No, because once I was getting my tags, they said I ain't had to.
Right.
So, from my understanding, I was thinking my dealership was handling, but I could show you receipts from my other cars. If I get a bill, I pay it, but we was under the impression that the, my dealership was handling it.
Yep. That's the same impression I was under when I moved here. I don't like the way the system works. I've said that many times. I don't like the way it works. Technically, you're supposed to report yourself and, and pay the, pay the property taxes every year on your, on your personal property. I didn't know that either. I moved here from out of state. I had no idea. His personal property tax and the way they do it is just crazy. I always thought it went through the DMV as well, that licensing office. It doesn't do that. Where I'm from, that's where, that's how it works.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't have to do anything else. And here, you have to go out and do it on your own and nobody's there to tell you to do it on your own, and the law says you got to figure that out on your own, which makes no sense. So, I'm with you. I don't think you should have had to pay this, but the law says differently, which is unfortunate unless our county counselors know something I don't know. It doesn't sound like-
Well, my, my thing is, they telling me I have to tell Clay County that I was in Clay County.
Right.
I did that.
You took and got your car registered in Clay County?
Yes.
Yeah, so what you don't, what, what, I think what you're confusing is our property tax system is completely different than registering your car system, and the taxes that you paid when you registered your car is completely different than the taxes that you pay, the personal property taxes you pay on the car. Those are two different kinds of taxes. That's the problem.
But wouldn't a bill come out saying, hey, you have to-
You would think, but it doesn't. I wish it did, and that's why I think this is, it's messed up. I think it's unfair. I don't think, I, I don't like the way it works because this happens to more than, more people than just you, happened to me. And I think it's ridiculous the way the system works. Unfortunately, we can't fix this system. It's at, it's at a level above us, but, but from what I understand, that's on you to not only register your car and pay those taxes there, but then you have to report to the county, hey, I have this vehicle now, this personal property, and then you'll be billed on that every year as well. Am I right about that?
That, that's correct, yeah.
That's our county attorney right there, that's-
But when you're reporting it, like-
Yeah, you would think you, when you register with the DMV, you're, you're reporting it, you're saying, hey, here's my car.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so the DMV and the county don't talk to each other. That's the problem. Makes no sense. Makes no sense. Where I come from, they talk all the time. Here, they don't talk. And so it's just, it's very frustrating. It's, it's, I think it's, the system is messed up. Uh, and I think it's messed up that we penalize people like you because our system's messed up. Obviously, you, you weren't trying to avoid anything, you just thought it was done.
But even when I got my tags, she said I shouldn't have been able to get my tags, because even when I got my tags, it should have popped up.
Yep.
They said nothing popped up, and I've been getting my tags for four years.
Well, so it's a personal property tax you have to pay once you get the car, then the following, you'll, you'll end up paying personal property tax.
And it didn't pop up. Nothing popped up on my system. I got my tags in 2021, and then again in 2022, and I got it for two years in 2022.
And you didn't, you didn't have to show any personal property taxes paid when you went in?
No, she looked it up and said I was good. She said I didn't have anything.
Yeah, for the system.
That's why I said I registered, uh, that's why I said I was registering and I reported, because I've been getting my tags. My ca, my tags don't expire till May of 2022, I mean, 2024.
So, you went to the DMV?
Mm-hmm.
And they checked your personal property taxes? Did you have to take something to them, or they, they check it for you? How did that work?
So, they check it for me, and then, uh, because my tax expires. So I go in and say I want to renew my tax. They asked me if I want to do one year or two. 2021, I said one year. She looked it up, made sure I had no property tax, and then she, I paid my, to pay, get my tax. 2022 came around, because I only got one year. I paid my, I did the same thing. She looked it up, and she said that everything was good. Even in 2024, had I, had I not have to go through all this, then I still wouldn't have been able to get my tags. Only reason why this caught up to me is because I tried to register a new car, and they saw that I had a 2020, 2020. That, when I went to the, um, assessor, she can see that I had a 2020. She just said it wasn't open for them to assess me. But she can see on their record I had a 2020.
So does anybody know, at the table here, or Tracy, why they would allow her to register her car and tell her that she's up to date on her property taxes, her personal property taxes?
Yeah, that, I've never heard of that. I mean, you know, it's a state function at the DMV. They're supposed to verify that the taxes are paid. That's one of the essential requirements. It's what my personal experience is, they always do that. Uh, and, and of course, on our end, on the county's end, we would never know if they're issuing, you know, tags every year. We would never know that. Because it, because it's, again, that's a state function.
And, and the other, I would ask the assessor and the collector, I d, I do not believe the DMV has access to our database to determine whether anybody has paid their county property tax. That's why you always have to take a paper receipt, unless I'm wrong.
No.
They, they can see, because tha, that's the only reason why I can't get my tags now.
See?
Commissioner, put your microphone on, so you can go ahead and speak.
Yeah, when I do mine online, I just enter my name. I never go to the DMV. I always just renew online, and they automatically can see my, um, see mine through the, when I do it online.
Yeah, they won't let you. I, I can, I can't even renew my tags now, because I have this, this, a balance. I can't renew my tags.
Well, I'll tell you, experience I had. They looked up mine somehow one time. They said, "I'm supposed to bring it in." I didn't have it with me, and they said, "Well, we're not supposed to do this, but I can check." I don't know how that works. They can look on the county website? Oh, maybe that's what they did. Maybe they just looked on the county website to see.
Excuse me, Barbara O'Reilly, Collector. Every week, the Collector's Office sends to the Department of Revenue the people that have paid taxes through our system, that if they're, uh, in our system, we send, uh, to the state, list of those parcels that have paid, and the list of outstanding ones, if, if they've been assessed.
So if she was, i, i, in this particular case, it never came, and we didn't have an account and registered, if they're looking for her, they wouldn't have found anything to show that she had taxes due, because she wasn't in our system. So, would that be it?
Yes, that's correct. And I have no idea what other counties do, but that's what Clay County does, in our office.
Anybody else? Are you, did you have any other? So, just to confirm, what is the amount of the fees for this? I'm seeing a bunch of scribbles out here. I'm not, I'm not sure which is the total. The fees and, and fines or whatever, the penalties and interest?
I believe $450, or $490.
I see corrected to five fifty, 353.88. 353.88? Did you want to comment on that, Tracy? Sorry, I don't know if I should be doing that.
The, the four, Tracy Baldwin, Clay County Assessor, the 49409 was with the $105 assessment penalty. I took that out, and we did a corrected bill. That's why I did some chicken scratches on there, some chicken scratches on there. 353.88 is the penalty, which we also, like I said, we just assessed for 22 and 23. Um, in this case, we could have went all the way back to 21 and 20 for this vehicle.
And then the amount of property taxes she owes for this is, is that the 1455.12? 1,455.12?
Yes. 1455.12, it looks like.
So it's 1455.12 plus the 353.88. Has the 1455.12 been paid? Nothing's been paid?
Because I didn't know you can split it up. I was supposed to come here first.
Okay, yeah, I di, I don't, I didn't know either. That's all the questions I have, if somebody else wants to.
Okay. Commissioner Lawson?
Yeah, so, so wait a minute, Tracy. I, I was looking at the 353.88 also. Is, does she owe us that plus the 1455.12?
Yeah, the, the principal amount of her taxes is 455.12. Then in, interest and penalties is 353.88.
353.88 is all she owes us, right?
No.
The 14 also?
That's just the interest and penalties. And that's for the two years.
Okay. And, and to me, this has been a damn comedy of errors, because she, I, I have gone to the DMV, you know, renewed my license and all. They have looked it up, like, with you. I, I know one time I went up there, I didn't, I forgot my tax thing, and they were able to look it up and say, "Oh, everything's fine," and went ahead and did it for me. So, they're telling, they're telling her, "You don't owe anything, it's okay."
Well, that, if I may, that, that would be correct. She wouldn't have owed anything for Clay County. So if they did look it up, and I have heard rumors from time to time that they've looked it up, but we've had taxpayer, I mean, it's, it's a common thing, taxpayers coming in from the DMV saying that they wouldn't look my taxes up, and I need my receipt. Um, Barbara could attest to that as well. Um, but I have heard a few rumors here and there that the, the DMV has looked it up. But in this case, even if they looked it up, she wouldn't have had any taxes, because she never reported that she moved to Clay County.
Right, right. And, and I get that, but here again, how the heck does the woman know that she has to come to the county and say, "I'm here, start billing me"?
Once again, Missouri laws, it is, it's.
I understand that, but, but do you think that Susie Q. off the street knows that? I mean, I wouldn't.
I, I could say is, as, uh, and, you know, this is no disrespect, but I can say that there are more people that know the rules moving in from other states. I, we've had people from, well, the other day, we had a couple from Africa that moved in. They came in to get a waiver. And a waiver is, if you've never paid taxes in this county and it's your first vehicle, you get a waiver. Um, they knew every detail about it, and they were from Africa. Um, every day, we have people from other states that have read our website, know the rules. Um, they want to make sure that everything's right when they move into our county. So, there are more people that know it coming from other states than not.
And, and I appreciate that, that there are some that do. But, but obviously, I see how people might not know.
It, it, I, I, I can't say that I don't disagree. It would be a great thing, I've said it before, that the DMVs talk to each of us. But the logistics of that would be almost impossible, because of the, all the counties in the state, and they would almost have to report to us every time somebody walks in and reports. So, um, in this case, Ms. Buchanan from Jackson County, they would have to call us and say, "We just had Asia Buchanan come in, and she's moving from Jackson County to Clay County today." Um, and then, you know, it'd be from every single person that walks through the door that came from another. So the logistics of, of working with the DMV is not the easiest, but I would love to hear for a way that we could get that done. We do have access to the DMV website. Um, so in this case, and, and, and that's part of our job, is when somebody comes in wanting to register their V, or assess their vehicle, um, we do look on the DMV, because sometimes they forget that they have a trailer or a boat or something. And we can see right there on the DMV website what they owned or have registered, and we can remind them to add those in, or check if, if they haven't put them on their assessments, things like that. So, we do have checks and balances from the DMV, but there's no communication. And there was, it, like I say, the logistics would be pretty tough to work with every DMV in the state of Missouri.
And I, I, I see the, I see why, you know, they said you don't have anything. But for her, we just, chokes me up. Uh, if, if, you know, her just walking in off the street like that and saying, you know, "I want to get my license and renewed," and then, I, I, I just can't see how she's at fault. Yes, by the law, God love it, she's wrong. But realistically, I, I can't imagine that everybody that moves to this state knows.
In this case, I, I believe that she, uh, lived in Jackson County for a number of years also. Um, Jackson County is the exact same way. You have to do your assessment every year. So if you move from Jackson County to Clay County, um, or any other county in the state, it's going to be the exact same way. You're going to have to do your assessment every year.
Well, if you, so you moved to, to Clay County, uh, from Jackson County, and you buy a house, then, then you have that big closing, and you have all the documentation, and it all comes in here. And then that way, we would be notified, right?
Real estate's totally different, then, because you have a deed, um, that comes with it to the recorder's office, and then, then we know.
Exactly.
Vehicles, uh, uh, there are a little bit, lot more to it than, you know.
But, it, it, uh, may I ask her a question in a second?
Um, but, you know, when we're talking about real estate, the same thing goes. So if, if, if you have a mailing address and you buy another house, and you turn that into a rental, and you want that bill to go to a new mailing address, you also have to notify us to change that mailing address. So that would be a similar.
Yeah, I can see that would happen, because you don't want to be responsible for that anymore. You want somebody else to be paying that. But, but ma'am, do you, do you own a home, or do you rent an apartment or something?
Uh, rent an apartment.
Okay, okay.
And as far as that, once I pay my tag, my taxes in Jacksonville, they send me out a bill and tell me to come down there, and then I come down there and they tell me how much I have to pay. And this is the receipt they will pay. And 2020, like I said, once I closed my account with Jacksonville, I couldn't even register my car in Clay County until I paid my property tax in Jackson County, and I had to pay that about five months early.
Yeah.
And so they were sending me out a bill, and then that's how I know, "Oh, okay, I have to go down there and pay my property tax." I have not gotten a bill. I haven't received anything, except, "Hey, your tax just went aspired, you got to pay your tax."
Yeah, and, and that's the, this is the whole joke of it, is that you were supposed to come down here. You were supposed to know that you were supposed to come down here and let us know that you moved to Clay County, start billing me, you know? And if I, if I were you, I wouldn't have known that. I would have been in the same darn boat you're in. I really wouldn't have known. So, I don't know. I, I just think it's, um.
I think it's wrong.
Commissioner. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you. Ms. Buchanan, did you have a car when you were in Jackson County?
Yes, sir.
So you paid property taxes in Jackson County to that car?
Mm-hmm. And before I had to leave, I had to pay that property tax for that car.
And so, when you originally started paying personal property taxes in Jackson County, did you, how did that happen? Did you report that?
Um, the same thing I had to do for this car, I had to get a waiver. And so each, each county that you go into, you have to get a waiver before you can register your car.
Waiver meaning something that shows you paid your pro, personal property tax?
Yep, so, in this case, because I had to tell Jackson County, "Hey, I'm no longer here," I had to go down, and that's why I had to pay my property tax in Jackson County, and then come to Clay County and register with Clay County, and pay my ta, uh, taxes there, and then re-register my tags with them for the new car, because it's a re-register fee for when I had to move to Clay County.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Um, before we take a motion, um, if there's no one else who wants to speak, the applicant can certainly, you know, take a few moments to kind of sum up what her position is, so that you get the last word essentially before we entertain a motion. So is there anything you'd like to kind of say in conclusion?
Uh, yes, I, like, like I've been saying, I've been paying my, I've been doing the right thing. I don't ride around with Aspire tags. I don't try to get out of trying to pay my property tax. Again, this is why I'm pushing to try to get this straight, because, like I said, I, my, my tag does not register to my car. And I can't get my car registered, because I'm dealing with this. And I, I don't feel like I have to, I should have to pay, because, like I said, I, I pay my property tax on time. I pay my tags on time. I, I'm not the type that will let a bill roll around, especially if I know that I, I still need my tags. Had, I've been told, "Hey, you have to register your car here, but you also got to come here to do that." I, I never knew that, because I would have done it a long time ago. I wouldn't have waited to try to register my new car and have to deal with all of this. Because the same way I registered my new car, that's the same way I register my old car. So, if you guys can pull that up when I register my new car, why can't you pull that up when I register my old car? Because I, I went through the same process.
Uh, with that, is there a motion related to, I'm sorry, I'm, let me pull the number back up. Is there a motion related to 2024.96? Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I'll make the motion, but first I want to explain to Ms. Buchanan our dilemma here. So for us to waive this, to, to waive any fee for you, we have to show that, that the county, um, was at fault, was something here. Um, the county, it doesn't look like the county did anything wrong. It looks like the, the system is a disaster, I think, and I don't think it's a fair system. But nonetheless, that's, we can't fix that now. The county didn't do anything wrong. What the law requires is that, uh, is that you report to the county separate from, and this is where the confusion may be, separate from registering your car, you have to report any personal property you have that can be taxed to the county, which is a completely separate thing than registering your car. Um, that didn't happen, unfortunately. Uh, and although we say that's your fault, that, I, I feel for you, because how were you to know, kind of a thing? Uh, just like, I didn't know when I came here, um, but had to pay it anyway. So I, I don't, unless somebody has another option here that I'm not seeing. I don't see any choice but to, uh, approve 2024.96 with the box check denies.
Okay. Got it. Commissioner Carpenter, did you have a comment? Uh, let me restate the motion, and then we'll go to the comments. A motion's been made for the approval of 2024.96 with the box marked "denied," indicated. Commissioner Carpenter?
Yeah, Ms. Buchanan, I just want to, um, sort of agree with what the commissioner has, has said. Um, unfortunately, we're just the county. Uh, state law trumps, um, county policy. And so, in this case, state law says, uh, that unless the county's at fault, um, we have to assess the fees. Um, and we would be in violation of state law if we didn't, uh, conclude that the county was in fault in some way. Um, I just want to completely co-sign everything he said. Um, the system we have is antiquated. The DMV, of course, should be communicating and sharing data. Uh, the technology absolutely exists to make it happen logistically. Uh, many other states do it and have done it for a long time. Um, we could also do things like have dealers collect sales tax at the time of purchase. There are a lot of things that we could streamline this process. I just went and registered my car a few months ago, uh, and found it to be quite a, quite a pain. And, uh, you know, I thought I knew going in, uh, what all I needed to have, and then it turned out that, you know, I hadn't thought of X, Y, and Z. Um, way overly complicated. Way overly complicated. I'm sorry that you've got caught up in it. If I felt like under state law, I could vote to get rid of these penalties and fees. I promise I would do so. Unfortunately, I agree with Commissioner Johnson that I don't think that we can. So regrettably, I have to vote to keep the penalties in place and I'm sorry.
I'd like to follow up on Commissioner Carpenter's comments, and that is, not only are we up here unhappy with the, with the, with the state of the statute in Missouri, but we have, in our legislative priorities, we've appealed to the state multiple times about how they can change these laws to make them more, more fair to the, to the taxpayers who have to live under them. Because our hands are essentially tied. And so I think every commissioner has pretty much signed off on the concept that we should have more latitude and more ability to work with taxpayers. And also, we need to work towards improving the system right now. It is something that none of us up here are happy with and we are trying to get that changed. So I know that doesn't necessarily do you any good at this particular moment, but we certainly are not very happy with what we are required under law to do. So are there any further comments before I, before we?
I have a quick question. So when they say I have to tell Clay County that I bought the car in here, is it telling Clay County when I register I'm here? Because it's telling Clay County, it says Clay County. It says I'm registering with the state of Clay County. So isn't that telling them, hey, this car is registered?
Commissioner Johnson, will you be? There you are.
You would think so, and that's what I thought, but no. So the, so the state and the county are basically two separate entities. And when you register with the DMV, that's, that's, that's registering with the state, essentially. Correct me if I'm wrong, anybody, but you're registering your vehicle with the state and then the county of Clay County collects a separate tax, separate from when you register your car and everything. We collect a separate tax on any personal property that you have. Every county does that, but we collect a separate tax on any personal property that you have. So you have to tell us, hey, I bought this new car, it's already registered, but you need to know, county, I have this car in your, in your, in your county now, so go ahead and hit me with a bill for that as well and I'll have to pay taxes on that as well. That's essentially how it works. They're two separate things, the county's personal property tax and the DMV. I don't think they should be two separate things. I think they should talk to each other like it does in so many other states. They don't talk to each other here, for whatever reason. And so it's up to the individual, in this case, you, to know that, which I think is crazy, that you expected to know that, but that's what the law says and we don't get to trump that. The state law says that you're supposed to know that and that you're supposed to not only know that you need to register your car, but you're supposed to know that you're supposed to now report that to the, to the county that you live in, that you have this personal property so you can start paying taxes on it. And what will happen, you, once you report it, then they will end up sending you a bill every year on that, personal property tax, and also the option to add anything else that you purchased that year or to exclude anything else. But they'll send you a separate bill every year in addition to your registration that you have to do on your car every year. That should have happened in Jackson County as well, but I don't know, it sounds like somehow you, you, don't tell them, but it sounds like somehow you escaped that in Jackson County as well.
Mm-mm. I've been paying my property tax in Jackson County.
Personal property taxes?
Mm-hmm. And they send me, once I register my car, it registered with Jackson County, like, hey, she has a car. And they send you out a personal property tax because they know you're there. They send you out a bill saying, hey, it's time you pay your property taxes, it's been a year, or hey, it's time to pay your property tax. Or they will tell you once you go up for your tax, like, hey, you haven't paid your property tax, you can't get your tax until you go pay your property tax.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with their system. If they're doing it that way, that's great and I wish we did the same thing, but we don't. Sorry, I wish we did. I feel for you. I think everyone up here would like to say, yeah, you don't have to pay this, but the state law doesn't allow us to say that. The state law says, no, you can't, you are not allowed to do that. They tie our hands, which is another thing I don't think is, is right, but unless I think that's where we're at. So I apologize, you have to go with this. I commend you for coming here tonight and doing a great job in articulating the issue because it's a broken system is what it is and, and we don't have the authority to fix it at this point, and I apologize for that.
Okay. Are there any further, no, any further questions or comments? Commissioner, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
All right. Next item on our agenda is 2024-90, I believe?
Resolution 2024-90 is consideration of invoice payments for the Clay County Prosecutor's Office from March 9th through March 20th. There are 20 invoices totaling $4,617.28.
Are there any questions or comments? If not, is there a, oh, Commissioner Lawson?
No, no.
Oh, okay. In that case, is there a motion related to 2024-90? Commissioner Johnson?
Moved to approve 2024-90.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2024-90. Further discussion, seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
I recuse myself.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yeah.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Motion passes, five in favor, one recusal.
Thank you. That brings us to 2024-95. Administrator?
Resolution 2024-95 is a consideration of approving the proposal for design, drawings, engineering services, project coordination and management related to the Law Enforcement Resource Center with Piper Wind Architects. Deputy County Administrator Kuntz is to provide some information.
Please proceed.
Good evening, Commissioners. Donna Kuntz, Deputy County Administrator. In 2023, we went out for RFP for our on-call architectural services. That, when that came through in the selection committee, one of our new providers is Piper Wind Architectural Services. The motion before you tonight is to seek approval to formally engage Piper Wind to look at our new indoor law enforcement resource center. And this would be an inclusive project with reviewing site evaluations, providing drawings, all the engineering services and project coordination throughout the project for us. This is utilizing set aside ARPA funds that was set aside previously last year.
Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, Commissioner Johnson?
Moved to approve 2024-95.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2024-95. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. That brings us to our last item, 2024-98. Administrator?
Resolution 2024-98 is consideration of approving an addendum to the FBO agreement with Apex Executive Jet Air Center for the airport. I'll just talk briefly about this. As the commission may remember, last year, we went out to bid for FBO services at the airport. That contract was awarded to Apex Executive. They began work in that function at the airport in January of this year. We've had some conversations with the FBO and because of some of the economic conditions that have sort of changed from the time that we put the bids together during this period of time, we have worked with the representative from Apex to do an addendum to the contract that would make some modifications for six months with regard to the agreements from a financial standpoint during six months to give an opportunity for, number one, rebranding and remark, and marketing of the airport under the new leadership of the FBO and also implementing some procedural and operational changes for the airport. Be happy to answer any questions about this amendment for six months is a period of time that we're talking about and we'll revisit that. If there is no second amendment, then everything falls back to the original contract.
Right. Are there any, is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Commissioner Johnson?
Moved to approve 2024-98.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2024-98. Further discussion, seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
That concludes our regular agenda for this evening. Next on our broad agenda is discussion items. The first, and I believe the only issue under that heading, is focus area update, economic opportunity, and that would be the administration. So please proceed.
Thank you very much. As the commission is aware, last year, the commission identified and created a strategic plan for the county. And as part of that process and during the budget process, when we were aligning our resources and our functionality along with the focus areas that are identified in the strategic plan, a request was made that we come back periodically and just give you an update throughout the year on a, on a focus area. So our goal is, once a quarter, to come back to the commission and just kind of give you some highlights of what we've been doing, what activities have been happening and sort of the status of where we are with a particular focus area. So we simply just went in alphabetical order of the five focus areas that we have. And so the first by alphabetical lineup is the economic opportunity. So we're going to just really talk a little bit briefly, again, about the economic opportunity focus area. And what I have up on the slide is really sort of the definition of what that means, what is the focus? And it is about supporting balanced growth within the county that enhances not only the quality of life for our residents and our business community, but providing diverse employment opportunities that is affordable and everything aligns with our long-range community planning effort. So under the economic opportunity in the strategic plan, there are two strategies that were identified by the commission during the strategic planning process. And the first one I have up here is diversify the tax base to improve the local economy. And underneath that particular strategy, the commission identified four goals that you wanted us to work towards. So I'm going to talk about the first three and then I'm going to turn it over to staff from this point over. So the first goal that was identified by the commission was attract the new Royals Stadium to North Kansas City. And again, this work was all done last year on the strategic plan. And as you all know, and I will certainly say it for the audience, the county and the city of North Kansas City worked diligently together in a cooperative manner to put together a proposal for enticing the Royals to build their new stadium in North Kansas City. As we're all very well aware and know, coming in April is a ballot in front of, you know, Jackson County residents, the Royals have focused in on a location in Jackson County. So unfortunately, that goal is not necessarily going to be achieved. The second goal is extend the Corps of Engineers lease at Smithville Lake. And so if I were to say to you, I think these are a little bit out of order because we certainly know we have a lease with the Corps of Engineers for Smithville Lake. It does expire in 10 years in 2020, 2034. And so we are looking at things and how do we prepare and be prepared to sit down with the Corps of Engineers to enter into a new lease agreement? And so part of that process, I would say, before we get there, is goal number three, is what does the Smithville Lake redevelopment plan look like? That was one of your goals. So those two items have yet to, to really have any work, substantial work done on those because part of it, I think, is, the first item that needs to take place is the comprehensive plan, which Kip is going to talk about in just a minute. We've done a lot of work on updating the comprehensive plan. Once that is accomplished, and a part of that is, in those discussions, is about parks, it is about quality of life. So we'll get some information out of the comprehensive plan from all the residents that have been engaged in that process. The next thing we would recommend, and we're talking about for 2025, is to propose to the commission to really update and identify a Parkmaster Plan. And in that Parkmaster Plan will include item goal number three, which what is the redevelopment plan of Smithville Lake looks like? Once those pieces are in place, then we'll have, I believe, a really good foundation of sitting down with the Corps of Engineers to talk about renewing a lease for Smithville Lake and what that looks like. So with regard to the two goals, there's not been a lot of activity on goals two and three at this point in time because we focused our energy on updating the comprehensive plan. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Director Jones and he's going to talk a little bit about all the work that we've done so far and the next steps on the comprehensive
Kip Jones, Planning Director. So I'm going to talk about the comprehensive plan a little bit. And there were a couple initiatives that were included in that comprehensive plan update, which included streamlining the land development code or subdivision process, which you'll remember that we did that, went through that process last year. Staff has been using that. I think overall, it's working really well. We expect to probably have some minor tweaks to that process probably coming up in the near future. And then also, after the comprehensive plan is complete, we are looking at, and we actually started the process, of doing the complete overhaul of the land development code, including every, every chapter. Now, that's a big project and we're looking 2025, 2026 for the finalization of that. But as far as the comprehensive plan goes, you can see on the screen, we basically have different parts in motion working together. We created committees. We had a stakeholder committee made up of citizens. We had a county leader, we have a county leadership team. Olson Studio is our consultant and they attended pop-up events, did open houses, conducted focus groups. We have surveys. There's a website dedicated to the comprehensive plan. We sent mailers to every unincorporated parcel within Clay County. We also reached out to outside agencies, which included cities, fire districts, water districts, school districts. I would estimate that somewhere in the range of 75,000 to 85,000 people have maybe not been a part of the process, but have been at events that the comprehensive plan has been involved with, whether it was the survey being on site or Olson Studio being on, attending those events. And that does not even include the media, which it's been in the newspaper, on the Kansas City news stations, and then also Facebook and things like that. So let's talk about next steps. So the next step is to get the draft plan. So Olson Studio is currently working on that. We expect that draft plan to be presented to the stakeholder committee in May of this year. And then it will go out to public comment for two weeks. And then we are planning for a joint county commission and Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on June 13th, where that plan will be presented to both the Planning and Zoning Commission and County Commission. After we take in all those revisions, comments from the public, stakeholder committee, county commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, Olson will go back and revise the plan and we'll also work on an action plan. And that action plan is for planning and zoning staff and that's how we implement the new comprehensive plan when it's adopted. Then also, we'll come back with the revised plans. We will have additional public hearings in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission, County Commission, and the Citizen Stakeholder Committee will also see the draft, or the final plan as well. And then we're looking, hopefully, this fall for adoption of the plan and then we will, staff will run and implement that plan. And then, as I stated earlier, that's when we would really dig into the land development code revision to align it with the new updated, adopted comprehensive plan. I do want to mention the website, claycountycompass.com. It's still active. There's additional information on that site. And then Megan is going to come up and talk about strategy number two.
Megan Soffeld, Tourism and Marketing Coordinator. Kip is right, strategy two, under economic opportunity is what I'm here to talk to you all a bit about. Strategy two is to promote and market Clay County as a desirable place to live, work, and visit. Under that, we do have three goals. The first one is to create a 2026 World Cup Strategic Marketing Plan. Two is to create a Unified Marketing and Tourism Communications Plan. Three, create a Historic Site, Parks, and Growth Development Plan. And diving into the first goal a little bit more, I'll cover some of the initiatives that we're working towards that. The timeline for the World Cup Strategic Marketing Plan is late '24. So in order to get to that point first, though, we need to put together a stakeholders group to really help align multiple perspectives and thoughts to get to that plan. I will say that we have been in contact with the official FIFA World Cup 2026 Kansas City Committee. We've met with reps there. We've learned a little bit more about their objectives and have opened that dialogue to discuss with them, you know, what object, what directives they're going to take. And then, then the organization, the county, has a better understanding of where the county's opportunity lies and how we can coordinate our efforts to align with theirs. Our own administrator is a part of the Transportation Committee, which is vital, having an understanding of the transportation that's going to be available to all of the visitors that are staying here, but also the ones that are passing to and from within the county is going to be vital to the planning process. So it's good to have boots on the ground and insight there. We are in the early phases of planning a bi-county collaborative approach that's going to include stakeholders from Clay and Platte County. to include stakeholders from Clay and Platte County. I think that a joint effort there would benefit all in the Northland when it comes to the World Cup. The second goal under here is to create a unified marketing and tourism and communications plan. We have made initiatives towards this goal as well. Under this goal, we've created unifying branding. What you see is just a little glimpse of our branding guide that we came up with shortly after developing our logo. We've used this branding guide when we developed the websites for both the government site and the Visit Clay site. And then we also use it in social media, and we've since created a second social media brand guide to really help align the efforts between all the various pages and platforms we have. And then we took it a little bit further, and we went and had logos created for our parks and our highway. So as those posts comes out, come out to residents, that it's, again, really unifying that brand and recognition that this is an official post from the county. We have also done many, many, many campaigns. I will say, you probably don't see a lot of them locally because part of our agreement with the state of Missouri to get their matched funds is that those campaigns have to be publicized over 50 miles away from the destination. So we've, we've done loads of campaigns. Most recently, we just did radio, across media campaign with radio and social media, and early estimates that hit over a million people just that campaign. So we are getting out there in various ways. Ever since the tourism department's been reestablished, we've been boots on the ground, hitting, hitting the ground and running. The next we have, I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to John Davis, Parks Director, and he's going to talk a little bit about what Parks has done under that strategy.
John Davis, interim Parks Director. Our goal here, create a historic sites and parks growth and development plan. As administrator said, you know, completion of the comprehensive plan and the proposed Parks Master Plan for 2025 is a big part of that. But we're looking at some initiatives to help continue with the growth. First, we're looking at two trail grants to add some small trails around our smaller parks, which would be Rocky Hollow and the James Farm. We're also looking at some, a grant to fund electrical vehicle charging stations. These will be solar devices, so they are mobile and they won't be hardwired in. Next, with the proposed highway, US Highway 51 bike route, which goes through two of our smaller parks, which would be the Jesse James Farm and Clay Brook Park, we're looking at some enhancement opportunities for those parks, which would be bicycle stations, as you see in the bottom corner of the picture, and then paving the Clay Brook Park roadway, which would be best for road bikes. Some more initiatives we're looking at, when, I won't take full credit for this one, and no, I actually won't take any credit, Megan found these. These are selfie stations, as you see. We've made prototype in-house, and we're looking at having Northland Career Center build those for us, and we're going to place them at scenic spots throughout the county parks. Next is the Cleo App Audio Tour. This would kind of tie in, if we put in a trail at Jesse James Farm, it's an audio app that people can download and take a self-guided tour of that park. Next is a WebTrack enhancement. This is an add-on to our current reservation system within parks. WebTrack would give us people the ability to do reservations for campsites online, day passes online, and get other information, you know, alerts and special events by phone. Next are infrastructure improvements. We're currently have engineers looking into ADA accessibility for the marinas. We're also continuing to look at other ADA matters in-house, such as parking and automatic doors, the CXT restrooms, which are funded by the ARPA projects. We will be finishing up those this year, this year, and that will add about 35 of those structures to our park system, all concrete and very maintainable. And then we're also looking at possible other amenities for the campgrounds, you know, and funding for those, do grants such as pickleball courts and basketball courts, gives people some things to do besides fish and hike and all that, so.
So those are just some of the initiatives that the team's been working on when it comes to our economic opportunity and the two different strategies and the goals that you all had identified during the strategic plan. But as with any progress, you don't know how you're doing if you don't measure something. And so we have identified key performance indicators for all the focus areas. And when it comes to the economic opportunity, there are key, three key performance indicators that we have looked at. One is the total tourism tax dollars coming into Clay County. The other one is the unemployment rate, and the third is the median household income. And so you'll kind of see, again, what department we've kind of said, you know, owns that particular one, and working with the data. And then where targets were set, or benchmarks, you know, again, how are we doing? And so you see there the target and the benchmark. Now, this was in a report when we came to you not too long ago in 2023 on the strategic plan, but the information on our actuals was simply year-to-date. So what we're doing is going through and updating all of those for year-end. So what you see here is, as of the end of 2023, you can see that our actual exceeded our target when it came to tourism dollars. Our unemployment rate is less than the national state, Kansas City region, which is our goal to be equal to or less than. And then when it came to median household income, our target is to be equal to or greater than the Kansas City region. And as you can see that for, again, these are as of 2021, because they are the most reported data that we could find, that we exceed the Kansas City region. So in this status, all of those key performance indicators under the economic opportunity focus area are green because we have met those or exceeded those. Now typically, what we will do in this process is we'll sit back and look and determine what are our targets for 2024, the year we're in. They may stay the same, or if we think that we, that's achievable, then we're going to change the target because you always want to be striving to be better. And so we're going to take a look at those. But we wanted to report out to you, as of the end of 2023, how did we meet those key performance indicators? And with that, you know, any of staff here, we'd be happy to answer any of the questions about the strategies, the goals, the key performance indicators, any of the projects they have going on. And again, they were giving you highlights. There are other things that they are working on that align with these goals, but we wanted to just kind of give you an update of what's happened. And again, remember, we're only in the first quarter of 2024, so. But we're happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the commission? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. So I have three. First one has to do with the, kind of mentioned the park plan, and it was alluded to in a couple of these slides. So if my memory serves, and this was back when I was still on council in Kansas City, that there was a, there was a county park plan done around 2018 or '17? Is that right? Does that sound about right?
We do have one.
Yes.
And we, and we also have some with trails that have been worked on also.
Okay. So I guess my, my question, and it can be answered at a later time if we need to get something, but I guess it's, in the scope of some plans that we've had in this county, that's a fairly recent one. And so I guess my questions, question around that is, how have we performed against that plan? And what do we expect a new plan to yield?
Well, okay. The 2018 plan, I believe you're discussing, is one made by the EDC or Economic Development Council. I just was made aware of that one about three weeks ago, I think, one of the board, Park Board members. So I'm just now looking at that one. The Parks Master Plan itself was made in 2003, I believe. I'm not positively sure, I have to look it up. So just to get updated and get, our goal is to get plans for what public opinion is going towards what we need to, and get our plan updated because it has not been updated forever.
So the 2018 one that I'm thinking about was an EDC product, not a product that came from the county per se.
And primarily only on trails.
Well, and that's what I remember of that, was that it was very much trail-focused for the entire county. And so I guess in my mind, what I want to, which that is an example of, not to say that's the right thing or whatever, but it just seems to me that whatever that yields, whatever a process yields, speaks to investment that then we would hopefully support in some fashion, and there's various ways of doing that. But that's helpful, so I appreciate that answer. Next question has to do with World Cup, and I appreciate that we are, have at least had a conversation. Go ahead and get up, Megan, because you're going to get a question. If not for this one, for the next one, for sure. So the, so as I, as I looked, this has been a while, but as I looked at the folks who populated the various committees, which I believe there were four different committees that are doing things, there wasn't a whole lot of representation from Clay County, for that matter, Platte County either. I understand that partially because most of the venues, there are no venues that are up here. So I guess my question is, has there been some sort of commitment made on somebody's part as to greater participation from Clay County in that activity? Whoever wants to answer that. You can fight them, I don't care.
Right. So you're exactly right. There is the executive group for the World Cup, and then there is a larger board group, which, again, Clay and Platte aren't involved in either one of those.
Yeah.
I will say, you know, from, for example, the transportation group, they have, so I think, you know, those two groups are still trying to find their way of how to structure and how to organize. They realize they are going to have to tap into a lot of resources, a lot of all our agencies in the region to be successful. And so I think they started with that when we're talking about transportation because that is going to be a major component of moving individuals around. And so they broaden that group a little bit. I think there is a lot more to come, but we have opened up the door in which, you know, we're involved, and we also believe that our, our goal is to have routine meetings with members on the board, maybe not the executive board, but on the board, to have that dialogue about what's going on and what are they planning, what do they need from us, what can we do? Because there's rules that we need to know what we can follow.
Right.
So, you know, it's, I think, you know, they, they know more than they knew a year ago, but there's still a lot more that all of us need to understand.
Absolutely. Well, the one thing I'll just add to that, just based on conversations from a long time ago, is that it strikes me that part of why this is such a big deal is that the fans of certain countries will descend, and they will make their headquarters somewhere. And it, to the extent that we're able to position ourselves strategically as, you know, we don't know who's playing yet, but if you're, if you're the German team, if you're the South African team, if you're the Brazilian team or whatever, and your, your team is playing in Kansas City, having a home for them, I think, is part of what we're looking for.
That's correct. So what will happen is, all the, all the cities that are involved in this will have base camps.
Right.
And so we will be assigned countries' teams.
Right.
That we will be their base camp. This is where they'll practice, this is where they will do everything, and then they will go off to fly off to, are they, you know, are they having a game in Chicago, or are they have a game in Mexico or Canada? But this will be their base camp. And typically, what happens is, you know, their fans
Right.
will come and stay where their base camp is. And they may go with them when they play a game, or they may not. As you know, Kansas City has six games, actual official games, and one of those is a quarterfinal. So that is great. You know, in talking, and again, you know, everything is still unknown, we will not know what countries are coming here as a base camp until possibly 2025.
Right.
And, you know, again, things that are said they're going to be by this date are some, are slowly, you know, getting pushed out. So 25, 26, which doesn't give us a lot of time, but you're right. Once we know that, that will also, you know, play into, you know, possibly some of the things that we do, but it's almost a little late. So you have to plan, not knowing who's going to be here as a base camp. Now, we do believe the Northland is a great location, and one of the things that we have heard is Kansas City is a great location for, you know, what I would say is great teams because of the facilities.
There's not a lot of locations even in the Midwest
Right.
that are having games, so there's an opportunity.
But it's also, from FIFA's perspective, you know, the new current stadium and, you know, sporting stadium, and so we have some great amenities here. What we did find out just recently is there will be a brochure that will be presented for all the company, for all the cities that will have base camps, that will be presented to all the teams, because again, you don't know who the teams are going to be that are qualified to even come to the World Cup. But they, what we learned today is they actually will be doing site inspections, those teams will, about where do they want to have their base camps. And I don't know if they bid it, we don't know how those are assigned. So there's a lot more to come about, you know, being involved with, you know, base camps.
Yeah. That's, that's great.
But because we also have heard that the current's practice field that is in Riverside will probably be a location that will be a practice field for, for some of the base camps that are here, which means we will have a lot of activity here in the Northland because of that, we believe.
Yeah. Well, between that and what's at Platte Purchase Road, I mean, we've got a couple of good locations, but I think to your point, it's, it's getting that package together now.
Right.
And it sounds like you're doing that, so that's great. Last question is, and this goes back to when I used to serve in Greater Kansas City's, on Visit KC. When we did that promotion outside of the city, we had certain target markets that we went to, there was about probably eight or nine back 10 years ago, and probably it's still the same ones, where we were spending our promotional dollar. And so I know I'm not going to see a single thing that gets put out about Clay County, but who is? I guess if you can, Megan, you mentioned, you know, at least 50, 50 miles out, but are there particular targeted communities that we are trying to promote Clay County to?
Correct. Yes. So we do stick with the Midwest region. We've, you know, we look at the traffic patterns on who's coming and then try to expand our reach a little bit further beyond that. So recent campaigns have gone out to St. Louis, Wichita, Springfield, Des Moines, Tulsa, Omaha. Those are really strong regions for us to market because it's very drivable and it's an easy weekender trip. And folks are already coming in those regions, but we can reach beyond, you know, the demographics that are coming here and expand it further.
Just build the peak a little bit more. Yeah. Great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Whittington?
I know I've said it before, but I really think that before we have the conversation of renew, or before we get to the point of renewing our lease with the Corps, I think we really need to have a serious conversation as a committee or as a commission on, do we want to continue to have that relationship? You know, do we want to have a rural Parks Department? Or do we want to have a Parks Department that's urban and not just rural, but rural and urban and partners with all of our municipalities? You had mentioned the 2018 trail plan. I mean, we, Clay County is a very unwalkable county. I've said that many a time. And we, we need to be partnering with these municipalities to build out our trail system. And every day that passes, new developments come, we lose, we lose out on a lot of those trail opportunities that have been designated. So I think, I think we need to have a serious conversation as a commission over the next few years on the direction we want to take our Parks Department, and hopefully, we can start partnering with local municipalities to try to, try to make Clay County more walkable and pedestrian-friendly. And that's not a political thing, you know, that's not a green infrastructure, or, you know, a green climate. It's, it's, it's true. You know, none of the municipalities have the money to go in and retrofit these older neighborhoods to make them walkable, but they all have green space where trails could go through. And, you know, if you look at Platte County, what Wes Mender was able to do with the Line Creek Trail, completely reactivated that entire area from Zona Rosa all the way down to Briar Cliff. And now North Kansas City is looking to tie in to that trail system. that trail system and actually open up their riverfront. I mean, that's probably going to be a bigger fight with the levy board, but still, they're looking to tie into that. So, now you'll be able to go from the Missouri River all the way up to Zona Rosa on one continual trail. So, I think we just need to have a serious conversation on where we want to take our parks department, and how we can be partnering with our... all of our municipalities in the county to help them build out a world-class park system.
So, tying into that a little bit, what Scott had requested about the 2018. So, that is one of the things, you're exactly right, is to look at that plan, and what's been done, what's not been done. And what's not been done, is it even feasible today based on things that have happened, because nobody had their eye on the ball necessarily on all of that, and some opportunities may have been missed, and so, how do we redo that? We've also talked about, how do we sit down with the parks directors and all the municipalities so that they align, right? So, what is the plan, again, having that bigger strategy, you know, if that's the direction that we're going to go, and that we want to expand trail opportunity? I've always said it'd be great to, you know, somebody to get on their bike, you know, at the river in North Kansas City and go all the way up to Smithville, for somebody who wanted to do that, if that's what the county wants to do. So, we're going to dust all those things off and prepare. We're not making, you know, and then we'll be back, right? But it is, it's part of that strategy. And again, you know, not that goals can't change, but, you know, the goals that came out of the strategic planning was, let's look at a redevelopment plan of Smithville Lake, and what does that look like, and let's talk, and let's start renewing with the Corps. If we want to change directions, absolutely, let's have that discussion about what that looks like. But we will be back with information, so you all can have good discussion and make informed decisions.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yeah. I would say, I love Commissioner Withington, but this is where we're going to come to a parting of the minds. If you haven't been... If all of you have not spent time at Smithville Lake, you need to get your butts up there and spend some time there, because, I'll tell you why. You try to get a boat in the water up there, or try to get a boat out of the water on a weekend, it's packed. It's packed. That means we're selling goodies, we're selling gasoline, people are seeing and enjoying that area. We, as I look at it, I don't think we do a whole heck of a lot for our citizens. I really don't. I mean, we provide good protection, we're trying to get the roads all good, you know, there are those things. We try to watch our money. We are doing what we said we would do. But there's nothing tangible you can put your hands on, I guess, but there is up there. Go to the golf course. A long years ago, when I golfed, which was a horrible disaster, you golfed up there, and as you came down along that lake, there's no prettier place to play golf. And people are packed. You're waiting to get on that course, you know? And they have a lot of tournaments up there, that generates revenue. You know, we've got the trap range, that brings in huge amounts. We're getting ready for a big trap shoot, the first part of the weekend in April. There's going to be over 400 kids that are going to be there shooting, at young people. And so, you know, the... If you go, if you take the time and go up there and go to the floating marina that has the restaurant, man, you go up there on Saturday night, it is jumping, and it is packed with people. There's people in boats that pull up there, eat, and, you know, sit around there and talk. If there's music, they listen and dance, but if not, they're just there to enjoy a conversation. People come over the ground, you know, over the roads, and they buy, so they can sit by the water, and, you know, it's just a really calm, lovely area. But I think that that's one of our crowning glories in this county, is that Smithville Lake area and the services that we provide, and we generate a hell of a lot of revenue that we would not have. Somebody else would have that revenue. So, I'm a big proponent of keeping that and working hard to upgrade it, the areas we need to upgrade, and people come up there and stay all weekend long. You try to get in there, there's a line of people, you know, trying to get through to get into their parking spot. It's just a real hopping place, and we would be very remiss if we didn't foster a good relationship with the Corps and keep that place going. Great source of revenue for us, and great, great place for our citizens to go and enjoy themselves.
Commissioner Johnson.
Two quick questions. Actually, first, I agree with Commissioner Lawson. Smithville's a great place. I spend a lot of time both on the water and on the horse trails up there, and I love it. I think it's a best-kept secret myself, but I hope we don't spread the word. But anyways, I love it there. It's a great place. But my question is about tourism and marketing. The first question is the... And I'm just looking for an easy answer on this one. The total tourism tax dollars, how do we come up with those numbers?
So, that comes from the Missouri Revenue Service. We get that from the state of Missouri.
So, we don't do anything... We're not calculating anything ourselves on that?
No. Those numbers come straight from Missouri Division of Tourism, who gets it from the Revenue Service.
And then, the next question is, your position, Megan, is marketing and tourism. I know several cities, or actually, maybe you can tell me, how many cities in the county have a position similar to yours? And can you tell me about your relationship with them, and is there a... Are we working together with them?
Yes. Yes, absolutely. Unfortunately, not a lot of cities have a tourism position or have the availability to provide funds for a tourism position. So, my role, you know, the way I view it is really as a conduit for them. I mean, we represent the entire county. If Gladstone has a festival coming up, you know, we work with the chamber, we work with the city to get the details on that, to help push that out. I try to stay in very close contact with them. We just are kicking off a tourism newsletter that I'm trying to send out quarterly, just to make sure we're all on the same page. It gives folks an opportunity to see what we're doing here at the county level, but then also keep that dialogue open if they have anything coming up that they could use our help getting exposure to.
And off the top of your head, what cities in the county have a position similar to yours, or?
Sure. Excelsior Springs and Liberty are the two primary ones. You know, otherwise, we work with a lot of chambers that have kind of taken up the lead on the CBB side.
That makes sense. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you. Just a follow-up to my colleague's comments. I feel like both of those sentiments are not mutually exclusive. We can build a robust trail system and still do quite a lot with Smithville Lake. I think... But what I want to impart, though, is, I think if we're going to go down the road of doing a comprehensive plan, which, if the last one was 2000, I don't disagree with that, but what I sure hope is, whatever comes from that, comes back with big ideas. And I say that because, depending on how big those ideas are, we do have tools in the proverbial tool belt in the county, both in terms of authorization that we still have under park sales tax, that we also...
And the park mill levy.
And the park mill levy, which is currently set to zero. So, depending on the flavor of how one wants to fund such big ideas, those are available. And so, I guess I just... Unfortunately, I want to put as many horses in my colleague's way as possible. I'm kidding. But just to point out that, I think as we talk about World Cup, and people coming in, and there's a bunch of assets in other counties, well, we do have the opportunity to build up our stuff. And I think that if we're going to spend the kind of money, which I'm going to assume is going to probably come back in a future budgetary request, then what comes back from that should be big. And if it's big, and we have enough public input to suggest that it's almost a mandate that, yeah, do it, that we then use the tools at our disposal to do it, to get to where we really need it to be. So, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Absolutely. And unfortunately, sometimes the downfall with plans are, they're done, great, and then they sit on a shelf. And so, the goal on this is, you know, when... The outcome of this plan will have strategies, and how do you make it happen, right? And so, there are all sorts of ways. Some are going to be agreeable, and some aren't, but you have to look at all those avenues. So, that will be a part of it.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Withington.
I was just going to say just that. I want to make sure we can come up with a plan that's implement, you know, that we can implement, you know, not like that '92 Highway Plan that we had from 2000 that just sat it, or the trail plan from the early 2000s or whatever. You know, we need something that, if we're going to spend this money, let's get something that we can actually implement. But, you know, I think Smithville's a great asset, too. I just think that we should have a county-wide park system. So, I'm not saying that I think Smithville's bad, you know? And if we didn't renew our agreement with the Corps, there's already private businesses that have said that they're interested in those. So, I just don't think the government should stand in the way of private business either, you know? So, that's where I'm at.
Are there any further comments or questions on the subject? Seeing none. Was there anything that you were looking for, consensus from the commission? It sounds like this was largely informative.
This was just an update for the commission to give you a sense on what staff's been working on.
Very good. Thank you very much for the update. That brings us to county administrator comments, so you are still on.
Just a couple of reminders. We are still taking applications for the Civic Academy, which kicks off the first of April, so we still have some slots available. If people are interested, please go to the website and register for that. And then, the commission's next meeting is next Thursday, the 28th, here in the commission room at 6:00 PM.
Thank you very much. This brings us to commissioner comments. Commissioner Carpenter, we'll start with you if you don't mind. No comments. Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes, sir. Just real quickly, I'm wondering if we could have, unless you have a better idea, at some point, some kind of updates on SB 190, our ordinance to it, and how we as a county are preparing for that, and getting things ready for that to take effect as it's coming up, so that... No, I'm hoping maybe we can do this in the public setting like this, so that my bigger concern is educate, making sure that we're ready for it, but also educating the public on it, because there's still so many who don't know about it, but...
Absolutely. We can do an update. I think next week's meeting looks a little short, so we can probably give an update on what we've done so far. We have created some handouts that we've done internally. I believe Commissioner Lawson is going to go speak to a senior group, and I provided copies of that for her to distribute. We have, we're continuing to update information on our website for, you know, Q and A when we get questions. We're putting that question out there with the answer, because if somebody's got that question, we figure other individuals have those questions. We still have a lot of questions ourselves. We just met as a team on it again today to kind of work through some of the details, but we'll be happy to give you an update. We agree, I know you guys are getting calls, we're getting calls here. But again, I think the key to remind everyone is, the application process opens in January, right? But go to our website, keep up to date, call us if you have questions. On our particular website, on that particular page, you can sign up for notifications, so anytime there's a change or an update to that website, you would get notified. So, we encourage individuals, but we also know, we have residents who, you know, could care less about what's on the computer, and so, we were talking today about what is the communication plan, and the rollout, and what that looks like, and the timing of that, because we know not everyone is going to get their information off the computer.
Remind me again, what was the age, 65 or 62?
62.
62. Oh, that's even closer.
Commissioner Withington.
Did somebody have a birthday?
Commissioner Withington.
Oh, is it my turn?
Yeah, I saw that you had set recognition, so I kind of jumped over to you.
Oh, I might have hit that. Is it my turn for commissioner comment, though?
Please go right ahead.
Okay.
You want to go?
No. I think I might actually hit that. Okay, okay.
I was going to say, if you guys want to do rock, paper, scissors, or something.
Well, I was just going to, I was going to give a shout out to the sheriff and his team, but he left. The sheriff's department was... So, the National Institute of Jail Operations has awarded the Clay County Detention Center its Level 1 accreditation, which is the highest level. They just got that three days ago, so congratulations to them. And then, today, March Madness started today, and did you guys know that Commissioner Johnson went to Long Beach State, and they haven't won a March Madness game in 51 years?
Oh, my God.
This was their first tournament in 12 years, and they lost to Arizona.
The number-one seed team.
No, they were number-two seed. So, or no, they were... Maybe they were number... I don't know. I think they were number-two seed. But, yeah, so Jay, you're going to wait another year at least for another win.
Our football team's undefeated.
Commissioner Lawson, now, 51 years ago, that's before you were even alive. That was before you were even born, isn't it? 51 years ago, yeah, that's... No, we'll just go up this way. The order is not too terribly important. I just mix it up a little.
Well, then, turn me on there.
All right, I got you.
Okay, thank you. Two things. Number one, I hate to bring this up again, I'm going to get dirty looks. I want to know when something's going to happen on Ryan King. They are calling me, and I need to know where we are on it. Are we going to start doing the ditches, putting in the tubes, doing something, doing something out there? Because they are getting hostile, and I don't want them to...
We can't do anything as long as it's in court.
No, we can. No, we can do it. The only thing that... We just can't do it as wide as they want it. Good. No, and remember, that wasn't true.
Your Honor. Carl Walters, Deputy County Administrator. We are waiting for an answer for what we can do at this point with the attorneys, so that we know what we can do and when we can start. So, basically, that's what we're waiting on right now. We can do a portion of the road, but that doesn't complete the whole road of what we're waiting on.
What's the... I thought that we could... We were saying, yes, we'd like to have it wider, and we'd like to have, you know, that all resolved, but I thought that the understanding when the people were here was, that it was wide enough that we could go ahead and chip and seal that, even if we didn't, you know... Am I wrong? Probably, but...
Mr. Counsel, go ahead and turn your mic on, please. Thank you.
The litigation is ongoing, and we have been working on it actually quite a bit in the last two weeks in particular, in the last month or so. My understanding is, the road can be improved, but it's the curage around the road that is proving to be a little more difficult. And I probably, I'll leave it at that for now.
Well, what am I going to tell them? You know, they're upset, and they felt as though, you know, we allocated the funds for it, and now nothing's happening, and, you know, I share their pains, so I just...
Tell them to tell their neighbor to drop the lawsuit.
What?
Tell them to tell their neighbor to drop the lawsuit.
Well, you know, that's not going to happen. They'd all do it if they could get him to do it. And, you know, some of them have a great relationship with him, some of them don't. And, you know, I just hate to see that that... They have to continue to live with that crap that they've got out there, and not be able to go ahead and get that road taken care of for them. So, we can't do anything until it's legally taken care of.
No, we can't talk about the litigation in a lot of detail. And we really should be talking a lot about a non-published item in a commissioner comments. And so, I appreciate the concern, but this hasn't been noticed up for today. I mean, between the litigation and the sunshine concerns, it's not something we should...
I understand.
That was something, because we had had a seminar here some time ago about sunshine law, and so, I'm, you know, I think my interpretation might have been overly strict because of not just the history of my service here in this building, but certainly, the phrase "will be liberally interpreted" means that, that means it would be very strictly and constrictedly interpreted. But I do want to make sure that we... While I want to make sure that I'm allowing the proper degree of latitude, I'm getting a little concerned, as you are, that we might be straying into areas where our sunshine law might be getting, might be stretching those boundaries a bit. So, I'm glad you mentioned that, because I was going to ask how close we were getting to those guardrails.
Yeah, forget all of that. But the bottom line is, we said that the road was wide enough, as it stands today, that we could go ahead and proceed and get that done, even if all of the rest of it didn't come into fruition. So... So I'm, I'm just wondering if we can start, start something and get some of the work done? And anyway, that, that's, you know, they'll, maybe they can come back in and you can discuss it with them.
Mr. Commissioner Counsel, I would like at some point, and offline, not necessarily at this moment, but I would like some guidance from you as far as, you know, with commissioner comments, where are my boundaries exactly? Because they are, are more than I thought after that one sunshine law seminar. But I want to make sure that I don't err in the other direction. So at some point, could you
Sure.
kind of instruct me and maybe, you know, the rest of the commission on where those boundaries are? Because like I said, I don't want to, I don't want to restrict discussion, but on the other hand, I don't want to take us into a place where we might be, uh, potentially violating sunshine law.
Sure, happy to.
And I don't, I don't want that either. I just want the darn road fixed. Anyway, the other thing I had was, um, that I had the great pleasure, along with my cohort here, Commissioner Wagner, uh, to go down to the Google presentation, uh, on Wednesday. And it was fantastic. Uh, the speakers, the governor was there, the mayor Q was there, that, you know, they had a lot of fantastic speakers. Um, I was highly impressed. I was a little disappointed because as they went through their big speeches, one time, in passing, almost missed it if I hadn't been listening, they mentioned Clay County, and then they went on. It was like we didn't even exist. And, and you know that, what do they call it? KC A D C?
ATA? Or EDC?
A D C.
A D C, yeah. There, they worked for six years with Google to get this thing going. And, and I think they had other partners, you know, and Hunt Midwest and were all involved in that. Uh, Commissioner Wagner, in his previous life, got the road that goes back there fixed. That was a Kansas City thing. But nothing with Clay County. And it amazes me that it's in Clay County, why we were not involved. And I'd like to see in the future that maybe we somehow foster a relationship between our EDC and Kansas City EDC to work together on things like this. It's a massive project. It's going to bring us lots of money. It's going to give our people great jobs. And plus, the upgrade of technology out of this world. So I, um, I just was, um, you know, feeling kind of like kicked in the teeth because we were barely mentioned. So I, I'd like to see what we can do to try to, I don't know who we go to or how we do this, but to try to get some kind of relationship built with them um, so that, that we can be more involved in, in projects of this nature, as long as it's in Clay County, even if it's in Kansas City, still Clay County. So anyway, it was a wonderful event, enjoyed it thoroughly.
Commissioner Wagner.
Oh, I can't top that. I have nothing to say.
Well, in the interest of getting out of here before 8 o'clock, I would just follow up on Commissioner Lawson's, um, thoughts that she was expressing. And, uh, I, I think that I would certainly like to remind the city of Kansas City that Clay County does in fact exist as something more than just a, well, that we exist. I'll just leave it at that. Um, with that, that takes care of commissioner comments.